Light is lit, which means we're online.
Nice.
So, good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming out. I'll open the, uh, the public meeting.
Recording in progress.
For the Newton Planning Board, February 22nd, 2022. I'd like to start with a salute to the flag, please. Would you like to join me? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Uh, first thing, I'm gonna remember this time, I'm gonna appoint Mr. Marshon as a voting member tonight in the place of Mr. White. And then just check, who do we have joining us via Zoom?
Ms. White, the rest, I guess, but...
Hi, Barbara.
Hi.
Um, unless they announce themselves as being...
Okay, and then there's just, there's some public.
Yeah.
Okay.
Public.
Okay, I'd like to open up the first public hearing. Zavash and Diane Mahalati request a public hearing for a home-based business landscaping at 8 Nordic Wood Lane, Newton, New Hampshire. The property is referenced as Tax Map 9, Block 3, Lot 15-9. Just a little bit of administration before we start. If you're going to speak, I have to ask everybody to come to the podium. Uh, when you're speaking, please address the board, even if you have questions, or you're kind of feel like you're speaking to somebody back there, you have to face the board. And when you first approach, please state your name. We need that for the, uh, for the record. And so to start, I'd like Jen Rowden, our Regional Planning Commissioner, to give us an update, and if she believes the application is complete.
Sure. I do think that this, um, home-based business is a complete application. Um, I think it's got all the requirements for taking jurisdiction. And I do have one small question when they start, um, sort of telling us about their business, but I think that can wait until that point.
Okay. Uh, I have read over it. I also believe the application is complete. If there's any questions on that, or if not, I'd like a motion to accept jurisdiction, please.
I'd like to move to accept jurisdiction.
Okay. Second?
Go ahead.
You got those?
Mr. Andrews?
Aye.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Lavoy?
Aye.
Mr. Marshon?
Aye.
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Ms. Collier?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Okay, thank you. And, uh, next step, uh, who would like to speak on behalf of the applicant? Okay. Yes, please, and, uh, as I mentioned, just state your name, please.
I'm Michael Mahalati. I'm a co-member, uh, Titan Landscaping. Uh, I live in Merrimack, Mass. But, uh, obviously, I'm half the reason that we're applying for, uh, you know, a business here.
Describe a little bit about the reason for this.
Okay, yeah, so I'm, uh, a landscaper, a hardscaper. I primarily do patios, walkways, you know, that sort of masonry stuff. Um, and we moved up to the area from Topsfield, Massachusetts last year, and, um, you know, I'd like to conduct business up here.
Okay. Uh, describe a little bit, uh, I believe I know, but for the record, describe a little bit about what will be taking place at your place of business.
Yeah, okay. At, uh, at 8 Nordic Wood, we'd have, uh, primarily just be storing our equipment, which is two trailers and a Bobcat. Uh, I have one F-350, a work truck, and that's really it. We don't have any employees or anything. It's just owner-operator. Um, yeah, very small business.
Okay. Any, uh, employees onsite or public coming to the location?
Just, just me. I'd be the guy coming in and out.
Uh-huh. Okay. Um, Jen, please.
Yeah, I just had one question. Um, at the, at 8 Nordic Woods, there's a bump out on the driveway near the house for parking. So you're proposing having sort of a gravel area immediately next to the house? How close to the neighboring property are you wanting that to come?
I believe that the setback line is like about 32, 35 feet on the plot plan, so I'm just looking to park one trailer. So it'd be, I guess, 15, maybe 15 feet
Okay.
From the gravel to the property line.
Okay. Uh, just wondering as far as shielding from the neighbors, the property lines, they're pretty tight, but it's not a structural setback, but just for the...
And there's a row of arboritas planted, uh, already.
Oh, okay.
Pre-existing. We didn't, you know, put them there.
Have we got any, uh, correspondence from the abutters?
We are all.
Oh, you are? Okay.
Yeah.
Perfect. I'll, uh, when I get to that point, I'll love to hear, um, what you have to say. Okay. Uh, any questions at this time from the board for Mr. Mahalati?
So basically, like, all the stone and whatever that you would be putting down for the walkways and stuff, like a lot of other businesses that we hear, when they come in here, you have that dropped off at onsite, and you don't bring any of that back?
Nothing. Just, just the machinery, just my Bobcat and the trailers. I don't, I don't like to bring stuff home.
Right. Keep it, keep it clean and home?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I was gonna ask, is there gonna be a situation where you're gonna be getting more equipment as your business grows and storing it at the house?
The only thing I might be looking to acquire is a mini excavator in the same class as the Bobcat, you know, something that can be towed by the F-1, F-350. So that's, that's really it.
Do we have a maximum?
Yeah, it's the 1,200, um, for trailer size, and none of, at least what's in the application goes above that threshold of what's allowed, so...
Is it an unlimited amount? Cause isn't there like a, for a home business, can you only have like a maximum of four or five vehicles?
Two vehicles, right?
Two vehicles.
But the, like, the Bobcat itself would be able to go on a trailer, so that doesn't really reach that. So anything additional, anything sort of a grander size would not be allowed to be stored at the site.
Okay. Okay. Do these trailers count as vehicles?
They would have to be registered, but they're not, they're not, they're not independently powered, so...
Okay. So, uh, before I move on, so right now, we're looking at, um, a subcontractor, a Bobcat, the dump trailer, and the utility trailer.
Correct.
Would be parked onsite, and it looks like, um, no, I don't need to go into where right now. I see the locations. Okay, I'm gonna, uh, you can go ahead and...
Thank you.
...sit, and, uh, I'm gonna open it up for any public comment. So if you have something, please approach, state your name, and...
I don't usually come to these, but, uh, David Pugh. I live at 7 Nordic Wood Lane. Um, I'm actually the probably the second longest resident on the street. Um, the people that lived in the dome house don't live there anymore. The Hamiltons were the first, I'm the second, and then all the other houses built up around me, which was great to see that. Um, I moved in when, with a two-year-old. He's now 18. Um, I personally don't like this idea. Um, and I'll tell you why. There's a few reasons why. Um, I'm not sure if everyone's seen the covenants that are in effect till 2034. I know about my neighbors have it. Um, right off the bat, number eight, right off the bat, says, "The following may not be maintained in open space on any lot, vehicles, commercial or private boats, campus trailers, machinery, supplies, materials." I mean, so I mean, that, that hits what we're talking about right now, vehicles. Um, I don't like the idea of having vehi... There's a lot of little kids on the street, which is nice to see. Uh, neighborhood growing and, um, building and having little kids, and so traffic and little kids, I mean, that's, that's my concerns. Um, but again, the covenant house, covenants, I don't know if, I didn't know if anyone knew about these, but when I saw that my neighbors had them, I'm like, oh, cool, this is, this is legit. I don't know if the, I just didn't think when I was buying a house, it was a more of a runaround for me, but it's, I mean, if you guys want a copy, this is a copy. Do you need them?
Yes. What was it? Uh, go ahead and...
This is for your friends.
Pardon me?
A whole bunch of things. Like stockade fence, I mean, uh, chain link fence, not having political signs, and not having all that type of fun stuff.
I store my own elsewhere.
Uh, not having a, not having an RV on your, on your thing that people live in, and all those different things, but I mean, right off, number eight, right off the bat, hits a homerun. Um...
Okay.
One of the, another thing I, what I, if it was me running this property, running this thing, I would've, and again, no offense to you, I would've went around to all my neighbors and say, "Guys, I just moved in. This is what I planned to do." I got a letter from the town of Newton, a signed letter. I'm like, I tell my wife, I'm like, "What's, like, what's..." She came in, she starts on the, um, the door. She's like, "What's this?" I'm looking at the town of Newton. I'm like, she's like, "What'd you do?" And I'm like, "I didn't do anything."
So the abutter notifications.
I'm just home all day. I work out of my house. I don't do anything. You know what I mean? So again, that's just my, and if I did it, that's how, I would've made, I would've broken the ice with my neighbors to tell them what's going on. This is my plans.
Yeah.
And instead, we're, I'm here, and again, so that's why I'm, I'm not happy this is happening.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you very much. Before I move on, I wanted to, yes, Jen?
Yeah, um, here, here the abutter concern, and obviously, you should hear from everyone else that wants to speak.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Um, to meet the town regulations and go through Planning Board is one part of the process. If there are covenants through deed restrictions, homeowners associations, that is outside of the town's jurisdiction. So the, the town could allow it, but your homeowners association may not, or it may, and haven't seen your, your deed restrictions, so...
So the question, what would be the need to have that, if, if there's no law that's...
Well, because that's a, that's a civil precedent. It's, it's outside of the town's jurisdiction, so...
Right, right. Oh, I totally understand.
Yep.
I totally understand.
You took down your chain link fence because of the covenants. She removed her fence. I keep my boat stored somewhere else.
You have to use the mic. Sorry.
Um, I keep my boat stored because of these covenants. I initialled this at the purchase and sale of the house when I purchased it eight years ago. I'm aware that I can't, I mean, I, I knew going into this that this wasn't. I have an 11-year-old and a 13-year-old. I've been in town for 20 years. I'm not okay with this either. I'm staring at two trailers right outside my dining room right now. This is why we have the covenants, to prevent this. I, I mean, we're all on the same page here on the street.
Okay. What was, what was your name?
Jessica Carey. I live at number nine.
Okay.
I'm directly across.
Okay.
Thank you. I mean, I bought the house because I wanted to raise my kids here, not look at gravel or trailers. I mean, I, I understand the covenants. I'm not sure why they would be in place.
Well, the, and as Rowden said, it, the covenants cannot be enforced by the town.
So all the neighbors would have to get together.
It's a homeowners association. We can, we can under, it, we can look at it as the same as concerns from the neighbors, but we can't enforce it. And because of that, that alone, um, I believe, doesn't give us a reason, that alone, I'm saying, doesn't give us a reason for denial.
But, um, well, there's what, 12 houses on the street, so if you had eight sets of neighbors against this?
I'm just saying, like, the covenant alone.
Yeah, no, I'm just saying, like, we all came together to...
Okay. Um, I don't...
So, I mean, I, I probably wouldn't have purchased the co, I mean, purchased the house if I didn't inquire about this before I made the purchase. I mean...
Right, I understand.
I, I stored my camper up until my husband passed away at my mother-in-law's house, knowing I couldn't keep it. Jackie removed her chain link fence due to a complaint because of the covenants. I just don't really understand that, I guess.
Okay. Uh, Jen, and then, I'm gonna hold off on the public comments, just for a minute, please.
Um, just that the Planning Board has authority over enforcing the town's site plan, subdivision, and zoning regulations, and it's protecting property owner rights and abutters, so it's balancing those two. So just because eight neighbors necessarily come doesn't mean that something doesn't happen. Um, but the homeowners association itself is a separate civil aspect.
It's not the nature of it.
Or, I'm sorry, the, the deed restriction would be the same legal. It's not enforceable by the town. So...
Okay.
I, I was gonna basically echo you, Jen. Actually, if, as long as the applicants, and I understand your concerns, if they completed a complete application that complies with the regulations, I don't think we have the authority to not approve the application. That being said, if there is a, as I believe the chair, Mr. Andrews mentioned, there may be a civil way to deal with this. And, you know, in the interest of being good neighbors, I understand that somebody took down their fence, somebody stores their RV elsewhere. We don't have the authority to reject an application because you don't necessarily like it.
So I can bring my boat back tomorrow?
We don't have the authority to regulate that either way. The Planning Board does not. I'm not saying that your deed restriction does or does not, but that's more for like a civil attorney or a land use attorney to decide, to provide their opinion on it.
Okay. Um, okay, quick question, then I have some other, uh...
I don't know if I'm playing one. So, your point was good. Um, so, again, I'm gonna play dumb. Why have a, why have a Planning Board meeting? If, if we're producing documents, you're saying you can't act on it. What's the sense on, why even have a Planning Board? Why not just...
The Planning Board has, as Rowden said...
Do what you want, right?
No, the Planning Board only has jurisdiction over town zoning ordinances.
Okay.
Only town. Homeowners associations, deed restrictions, conservation easements, that whole gamut, we, we don't have any say on it whatsoever, even if we wanted to.
Based on what he said, it sounds like it's a, it would be a done deal anyways, no matter what you hear from the, unless it goes to a civil problem, and if that's where it's gonna have to go, I guess that's where it'll go.
Yeah.
Personally, I wouldn't wanna be buying a house, hearing my neighbors saying no, and then keep doing it, and then...
Now, all we're saying right now is that, and I'm always speaking about the written covenants, not the concerns.
Right, right. Okay, yeah, yeah, no, no, no.
Yes, the written covenants.
No, like I said, I was playing dumb. I just wanted to, but your explanation's great.
Your concerns are being heard loud and clear.
Okay, okay, no, no, no.
Covenants is a civil matter, which I would, well, yes, it's a civil matter that we can't...
No, no, no. That's why I'm preferring it saying I'm playing dumb, cause I wanted, you know what I mean? But no, your explanation is perfect.
So the reason why it has to come to the Planning Board is because there are town ordinances that have to be followed. So when somebody wants to open a business, or they wanna do something to their house, they have to come here and present it. So all of that, by, by law and technicalities, we make sure that those codes and whatever are met, like what Jen started talking about, the side, right? From the next store neighbor, there's supposed to be so much sidage or frontage or something like that, or if it was just a house, the sewer, all these things have to meet code. This is why everybody has to come to the Planning Board, so that all that is taken care of. And then, like, what Mr. Andrews was saying on the other thing, that's a separate issue, because that's put in place by your, um, which would be the homeowners association, which, so that makes it a separate entity. And so now you have two entities that deal, right, exactly. And one is limited to what they can do as opposed to the other.
Okay. No, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Uh, yes, sir, I don't know who, I can't remember who raised the hand first, but...
Um, I do appreciate, you know, neighbors...
Again, please, sorry, state your name, please.
I'm sorry?
State your name, please.
I'm Silas Mahalati. And Michael is my son, and that's my wife.
Oh, okay.
Um, I do respect your concerns. However, you know, the nature of this business is not something that, you know, we take a job for a week, we take the equipment there and material. It's not like we're gonna every day come in and go with material. Material is not gonna be brought to the, to the street, like, I don't know.
Uh, sir, sorry.
Gravel, gravel being brought into the street, or rocks, or whatnot, that's not the nature of business. We go to the landscaping place, we have a trailer, we pick it up, we go, and leave, you leave your equipment there at the job site. We don't drive back and forth the equipment every day. So let's say you take a job for, say, a week, we go pick material and leave the, uh, the equipment there. And as far as seeing the equipment, you know, this land is more than two acres. We can put the equipment in the back, so it won't be visible. We have the longest driveway, which is almost the street itself. So, you know, if it's visible, I'd be happy to move it behind the house, and, you know, to add us those sort of concerns. That's, that's all. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Ma'am?
Yes. I'm Diane Mahalati, and we moved here, um, the second week in January. And one thing I would like to say to the neighbors, I know I'm not supposed to turn around, is that we didn't quite expect that this meeting would happen as soon as it did. And I think it was just the timing of our application, and we filed it because we're law-abiding citizens, and we wanted to do it as soon as we could. But if there had been more time between the meeting and our moving here, we certainly would have introduced ourselves to the neighbors, uh, which we have done in other communities. Um, also, you know, partly the weather was a factor too, um, and that type of thing. So I do wanna let people know that normally that would be how we would operate. Um, and then I do have another question, and I don't know if my son's gonna bring it up, but the type of equipment we're talking about, some of it, like the Bobcats already on the street in a home. The F-350 truck is just a regular Ford truck.
Mm-hmm.
It is not a truck with, that dumps anything. Um, so it's not one of these big hauling trucks that you see hauling, um, like gravel or anything like that. Those are not the nature of the flatbed trailers
Mm-hmm.
that we have. And my son and husband only have two pieces of equipment. Well, maybe three, I'm not sure. Um, so I just wanna just let people know that we're not talking like heavy, heavy industrial trucks moving up and down this. And as my husband said, that we would try to make every effort to make it as appealing as we could. Um, and again, we are set back way off the road, and our intent is not, not to be an eyesore, not to be a problem. Um, that's it.
Thank you.
Hi. Sir. Michael Mahalati, you know, when we first moved in, we took a look around the neighborhood. As was mentioned, there's a Bobcat owned by the, our neighbor directly across the street. He's got a big truck, has a snowplow, another service I offer in the winter. Uh, I'd like to point out that there are other homes that are storing materials out visible. They have machinery, they got stone mixers. We have a HVAC contractor on the street, or plumber, whatever he does. We figured, hey, small business friendly, we'd fit right in. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. One more, and then I'm gonna have a discussion.
Hi, my name's Jaclyn Morrison. I'm at 11 Nordic Wood. So I have three little kids under the age of five. And my husband owns a company, okay, that he does heavy equipment. He has a contractor yard. People rent spots from him. And we don't have our equipment at the house because of this. We know about the covenant. Jessie at a 9 Nordic Wood, her boyfriend runs a landscaping company. He doesn't keep his equipment at the house for the same reason. So I don't think, I mean, we know what a landscaping company is, you know? And there is a covenant for a reason.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Thank you. Um, before I, cause this could go on for a long time, I have a question, actually, for the board and for Jen. My, my thought right now, because there's a little bit going on, and I'm not real familiar with the site, I am leaning towards if, if we could do this, is a continuance and have a site visit.
So you certainly could do a site walk because you've taken jurisdiction. Um, that would require a continuance. You've taken jurisdiction. You have 65 days to make a decision. So yes, technically, you could do a site walk if you thought that was warranted.
Okay. How does the board think of that?
Yeah, that makes sense.
Just a poll.
I think that's a wonderful idea.
Okay.
I'm, I'm a little, I'm, I'm very sympathetic to the covenant and to the understanding. I'm very sympathetic to that, and I also understand that's not our jurisdiction. Um, I'm a little confused as to what a site walk would give us that we don't have here. I'm just not sure what it is that we would gain from that, so...
Well, what I'm, what I would like to gain is a better understanding of what the view would look like, what it would look from the abutters, from the, the visual.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the traffic and stuff, I can't necessarily, other than a better understanding of what vehicles are moving. But the visual, which could then give, I believe, the board some ideas of how this could possibly go, go forward, um, what they look like. But Jen, go ahead.
So that, that actually, the, what is it going to look like from the neighbors? That was one of the reasons for my original question about how far. I mean, it, looking at areas, looking at areas with tree cover and without tree cover, there's basically one house from the street that has a direct view into this yard. The rest is pretty sheltered from wood cover. So I mean, certainly go on a site walk if you feel it, we'll give you information. But that's probably the only bit of information that you're gonna see, so...
Yeah. I mean, I, I pulled it up on, um, the Google Maps, and that plot number 10 is, that house is basically adjacent to, um, 8, to where he wants to put the, um, pad in, like Jen was saying. But there is, like they were saying, there's a lot of wooded area, according to the aerial view, coming in the driveway, that if there was supposed to be another one, like he's got further up over to the right there, that would be out of the way.
I think we need to see it, because I think it's really hard to get the guess from Google Maps. And I think that if we saw it and can make a better judgment, that would be the best thing for everyone here, so that we can make a better decision. So I, I think a continuance is a great idea.
Okay. Jen?
Um, I would, this is just a recommendation, that the property owners may want to read through the covenants of your property, just to ensure what the standing of that might be.
Okay. So since we just...
Mike, this is Barbara.
Uh, Jen, yes, Barbara, go ahead.
I have a, yeah, I have a question. I mean, I know that we're not supposed to take the covenants into consideration, but I'm wondering if we can ask the applicant if they were, weren't they aware of those covenants when they bought that house?
Okay. I hear that as a question. Would, uh...
Michael.
Michael.
Yes, we were aware, and we saw a whole bunch of violations in the, in the area when we drove through, so we figured we'd fit right in.
Okay. That's...
Okay, thank you.
I would like to just address the violations.
Okay.
We put in an in-ground pool. My boyfriend owns a landscaping company, and we just put the pool in. We pulled the permits through Shanti. Um, that's why the Bobcat was in the yard, because we just put in an in-ground pool. We bought a kit ourselves, so it was affordable. And there was equipment in the yard, because the pool just got water in November. I'm just letting you know, we were finishing work on the wall. That is why there was equipment in our yard directly across the street from them.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Um...
Uh, we start in October. We did it.
Okay.
It was marital.
I just wanted to make one comment regarding the views of the abutters.
Sorry, come up and state your name, please, ma'am.
My name is Elizabeth Clark, and I am at that 6 Nordic Wood Lane.
Okay.
Okay? My house is much further towards the road, so that gravel area, parking area, off of the driveway, is directly adjacent to my front porch. So every time I look out my window, go out my front door, sit on my front porch in the summertime, what am I gonna see? A trailer, a tractor, a Bobcat? I don't know. And as far as there being greenery there, there are very thin, very small, young pine trees. There is no coverage. There is one hemlock, which does not provide very much coverage at all.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Mike, before we proceed, can I ask the applicant a question, because this is probably gonna come up later? Um, regardless of what happens, and I'm trying to save us a step in this process, um, the, moving forward with a home-based business is likely in your future, and I'm trying to word this correctly, um, without storing any equipment there, is that a, including a vehicle, like your one ton? Um, because in order for, and I'm not sure if you can help me out with this, Mike, for you to register your vehicle in town, you would need to register it at your house. So I don't want to exclude you, and I'm kinda just putting this out so you guys know as well, um, as my assumption, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, is you're probably gonna be, say, this does move through, and this is 100% hypothetical, and you're not allowed to store any of your equipment, your trailers, or your, um, Bobcats, Skid steer, or whatever. to store any of your equipment, your trailers, or your Bobcats, Skid steer, or whatever. You're likely going to come back here anyways and apply for a home-based business, so you can move your goals forward or your business. So I'm just kind of, it's kind of more of an FYI than a decision or statement either way.
Okay.
Did that make sense? I did a terrible job wording that.
So I'm just going to clarify, separate from this, one of the things with a home-based business that we see a lot is there's, because of the way state law is, a company, even if they do nothing at the premises, and all they want to do is register vehicles in the state of New Hampshire, have to have a legal address, a business address. So we have business applications come through here where there is nothing that takes place at that physical residence, other than the vehicles are registered there. Yeah. So that's one of the, that's a requirement. And that's, is at least one of the reasons that you're looking for this.
Thank you.
Okay.
We're choking over here.
Anything else from the...
I'm going to say one more thing.
Okay.
David again. I know Anthony Reliant Energy was brought up. He owns a van HVAC company. It'd be no different than if I worked at Comcast and I drove a van home. He's out at 8:00 AM, he's home at 5:30. So it's like, I used to do that when I drove into the office. I didn't have a company vehicle, but again, so Anthony is, it'd be just like me if I worked for Comcast. I drove a van home.
So the equivalence there would be, say, the applicant's having...
And what I'm saying, and I know, there was talks about the three-ton Ford, that's your vehicle. That's not a problem. It's the equipment is what I think the street is not liking. I mean, I don't care if I drive, I mean, whatever. I drive this truck, if I had this truck that was jacked up 10 feet high, I mean, that's my vehicle, you know? But again, so it's no...
I'm going to ask...
It's no different than me driving Comcast if I work for Comcast.
Okay. Thank you. I'm going to ask a question of the applicant, really in just the sense of moving forward or, you don't have to answer it if you don't want. Would it be possible to have this business with the address here with no, none of the vehicles that you mentioned in here parked there, other than the F-350?
Equipment, right, not vehicles.
Right. So there would be no equipment, meaning the two trailers and the Bobcat?
No, that's currently not feasible.
Okay. Okay. Then, what's the answer? It is not feasible. Okay. Thank you. So I'm going to close the public...
You need to schedule when you're going to do the site walk.
Okay. I was going to close the...
The public hearing continues during the site walk, so don't close the public hearing.
Okay.
That stays open. Schedule the public hearing, and schedule the site walk and continue to that date.
Okay. I was actually just closing the public comment. Okay, you haven't spoken yet, sir, so I'll let you be the last.
Yes, I, Good evening, my name is Kevin Clark. I live at 6 Nordic. My wife's just spoke. A lot has been said. I do appreciate the business, but you do appreciate where we're coming from. We can't stop someone to do a business. But we do have, this is our residential place. We have children walking up on the street, and we bought our house, it'll be 10 years in October. It's a very nice place. The house is beautiful. And it's a nice place to live and to have, to see these trailers, the one that they show adjacent to my wife, reference to it, off where we sit sometimes in the morning and have a cup of coffee and all that. We just look to our left, and there's the spot that they want to put the drills. Yeah, I, I, I would hate to see this go, nothing against here about having a business here, but to have, to break, this is our residential home, homes here.
Okay.
And now to have a business here with the trailers, Bobcat, and they're going to grow the business of the residential, I'm sure, but this is our home. So I would hope that the board would take that into consideration.
All right. Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to close the public comment period at this time. And Jen, just, does it matter, the site visit schedule or the continuance? I imagine we need a continuance first if we're going to do a site.
I would schedule the site walk, too.
Okay.
Just do it all at once.
Very quick, sir.
That's site walk, could we...
It's a public...
Yep, so the public can attend a site walk. It is open, but there will be no discussion of the application by the board. They won't be taking public comment. It will be there simply to ask basic questions of location and then walking around. So, but yes, it's open to the public.
The board, the board asks questions, the board asks questions, the public does not. Okay. All right. So we have to look at our calendars.
Yeah. When are you thinking? Mike, this is Barbara. Could I ask a question?
Please.
Is this, is this the, is this the time to address the email from the fire chief? Or would that be when you came back?
I was going to...
After the site walk?
I was going to have it when we come back. I can, I can address it, just so it's in the record. There is a follow-on to the email that was in the package.
Oh, okay.
The same follow-on we've had multiple times with the fire chief, but, so...
Could I just make a comment?
Yes.
Because I know that he was saying that he wanted to make sure that the building complies with NFPA requirements, but the type of, the type of equipment that the applicant was saying that he was going to store in the garage and in the shed, isn't it any different than you and I putting our lawn care stuff in our own garage? So I'm not quite sure what he's talking about with that. And I can only assume, because of the way the fire code is, that since the applicants have bought their house in January, that before the person they bought it from sold it, I think that the fire department had, would have already been down there to do an inspection to make sure everything was fine, so that they could sell that house to somebody new.
How do I say this politely and politically? We have a problem and a failure to communicate with the fire chief. And so what he has said in here basically does not reflect reality as stated in New Hampshire law.
Okay.
I guess that's about the best I can do with that. Don't go too far on this.
I won't go too far. I just wanted to say that if the fire chief feels that this should be the law, he should speak with legislators to get it enacted, because currently it's not the law that we have to have a fire code compliance before we grant a zoning application. So, you know, if he wants to change the law, he needs to take those steps.
All right. Dennis, you have the busiest schedule, it seems like.
We also have a snowstorm coming this weekend.
Yeah, well, it's not this weekend, but...
So I'm really available on the weekends, but...
Well, it could be, well, so you're available weekends.
Just tell me when, and I'll try to make it.
How about Sunday?
I'm getting married on Saturday, so...
Saturday? Oh, is that your day?
I had a one-day honeymoon and got recalled by the Air Force.
I would rather not do Sundays if I can. I'm not going to be feeling great.
Okay.
Do we need a quorum?
You do not need a quorum. It can be whomever can show up, and then at the next meeting, you will discuss what you see.
Okay.
In reality, you could do it as soon as tomorrow. I would say it will be very nice in a warm temperature and no snow tomorrow. It's just a suggestion.
I am available until 2:00 tomorrow, and then I'm out of town to visit my daughter.
Okay. I can do before 10:00 AM tomorrow, but I can't do after that. So I'm free 8:30 to 10:00.
I could, that generally works for me. Well, I guess, is the applicant, like, okay.
So at 10:00 AM?
I can't do 10:00 AM. I have to do before 10:00.
Let's just declaring it an emergency.
So like, I could do like 9:00 or 9:30.
9:00?
Let's do 9:00.
9:00?
No, the notification this evening is the notification. It does not have to be 24 hours.
Okay. Okay.
So 9:00 AM tomorrow?
9:00 AM tomorrow. And that is at 8 Nordic Lane. Question for the applicant, if a board member cannot make that meeting, will they, how do I work? No, I can't do that.
You shouldn't. I mean, it's not, no.
Okay, never mind. Nobody strange is going to be driving down your driveway.
Do we need a continuance date?
It's going to be the next meeting, I would say, particularly since that meeting is a little ways away.
When's voting due?
22nd of March. Yeah, the next meeting is the 22nd of March.
Okay.
So that'll be good. You four will be able to make it tomorrow, right?
Yeah, I can make it.
Yeah, so that'll be for you, and then I'll just rely on what you have to say in the next meeting.
Okay. All right, so site visit tomorrow at 9:00 AM. We'll meet at the end of the driveway. Does that work? I would like in that to spend a little time walking up and down the street, and then, of course, in the driveway and seeing where, because, now, what of your equipment would you have on site tomorrow?
Just the trailers.
Just the trailers, okay.
And the small, the small trailers.
The small which?
The small, the sub-copback trailers.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
So the Bobcat?
Not the Bobcat.
Oh, the subcock, okay. Sorry, I forgot that was in there. Okay.
Okay.
All right, so the meeting and the continuance, which we do have to vote on, is to March 22nd, which is our next meeting. If I can have a motion to...
I'll make a motion to continue this hearing until the March 22nd.
Oh, second?
Any further discussion? Okay, Jim, call the roll when you're ready.
Mr. Andrews?
Aye.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Ms. Collier?
Aye.
Ms. Lavoy?
Aye.
Mr. Mashon?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Okay.
You and I have an order there, Jim. Excuse me?
I'm just going to have to do some...
Thank you, everybody. We'll see most of you tomorrow, and thank you very much for speaking. I know it's very hard in these situations where you have neighbors that are, want to be good neighbors and want to also speak their concerns. So I really appreciate the professionalism on both sides. Thank you very much. Okay, at this time, I will close the public hearing.
No, don't we have John Sylvia?
Yeah, that's the next public hearing. After, close and open.
Oh, oh, oh.
Okay, and just to let folks know, we do have more business. Feel free to leave. I just have to have the noise level down. Thank you very much.
You can stay if you want, as well.
Right, you can stay.
So have you, have you all been in touch with the people that made the covenant, for all of you?
I can be if I need to.
Well, no, for you people.
Can I be in touch?
You people should be in touch with them.
Yes, we can.
Yeah. That has nothing to do with us. I'm just saying that that's what you might want to do, so that they can approach them on their side about it.
I think it is a symbol, like you say.
Well, that's, that's what I'm saying, because it's a two-sided side. So if you can get the covenant people get going on it, then you might be able to work something out, that's all.
Okay. Just a general question. A town owned that? Question before I open the next public hearing.
Does the town own Nordic Lane?
Is Nordic Lane a public private road?
Okay.
It's a public road, isn't it?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah. Wait, yeah. I'd like to open a public hearing, John and Sylvia, John Sylvia and Ashley Guerrero?
No. Oh, who?
Request a public hearing for an accessory dwelling unit at 41 Highland Ave, Newton, New Hampshire. The property is referenced as tax map 5 block 4 lot 20. And Jen, do you have anything beyond what you...
It appears to meet your regulations and mine as typical conditions of approval with an accessory apartment. It seems to be complete.
Quick question for Jen. I reside at 8 Highland Ave, so I want to make sure that there's no conflict of interest with me if I was to stay on, or would you suggest that I step aside?
Are you an immediate abutter?
Not immediate.
Then it is at your own discretion?
Discussion.
If you feel you have a conflict, so.
Does anybody, since Mr. Mashon brought that up, does anybody on the board have any concerns? That's fine. Okay, perfect. Thank you. So Jen, completed application?
Yes.
Okay. I reviewed it. I also agree. If there's any, any further questions on that, if I could have a motion to accept jurisdiction, please.
So move.
I'll second. That was Dennis.
Mr. Andrews?
Aye.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Lavoy?
Aye.
Mr. Mashon?
Aye.
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Ms. Collier?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvia, please approach and tell us what you would like here. I know it's all written down, but we like to hear.
Yeah, John Sylvia just moved in November. I have two in-laws in their 60s that are currently still in the house we moved out of in Malden. They're getting older, and we have a very large 30 by 30 approximately barn. It's two levels. The upper level would stay storage. The lower level, we wanted to make into a living area for them. So it's single floor, no stairs, just a very simple apartment for them, studio style, as you can see reflected in the plans. And, you know, kind of a twofold thing. We have four little children, eight, six, and two four-year-olds. So obviously, it's beneficial for them to come and give us a hand, because we're outnumbered two to one. And, you know, and obviously, as time goes on, it's going to be beneficial for them to be closer to us, so we can kind of repay them for all the kindness they've extended to us out in Malden.
Okay. And I see a nice floor plan, which helps, and I don't know if it was in the, correct me if I'm wrong, it looked like about just over 700 square feet?
Yeah, it's under 800. Right now, rough framing that's existing is about 782 square feet. We do have to fur out some walls to make insulation code and whatnot, so I think conservatively it's somewhere around 750 when it's all framed and boarded and everything like that.
Okay.
So it looks like it's like, from what you're saying, basically just a studio-type apartment with a separate kitchen area set to the side.
Yeah, it's a framed bathroom, corner kitchen, and then just an open concept.
Open plan, yeah.
We might throw a closet in the corner or so, depending on storage, but yeah, we have a closet when we walk in for some storage, but we are kicking around the idea of putting an additional closet in at some point for, if that one might not be adequate for their needs.
Now, the, the structure is already there, correct?
Structures existing, yeah.
If it was in the description, forgive me, which floor is this on?
This, the ground floor.
It is on the ground floor, okay.
Yes.
The connection to the existing house, is this...
That door, yes.
That door, okay.
Which door is that?
The one right here.
Okay, I was kind of, yeah, I was curious about that.
So right now, there's like a L-shaped, like three-season porch that connects the barn and the main house. And those doors are both existing, they're both exterior doors. So that would be the main entrance into both, essentially, and then you'd go left to go into the main house and right into the barn.
Okay.
And there are two other existing exterior doors on the barn already. One's a double door and one's a single pass door through the back.
Okay. I see the septic plan.
That has been approved as, on the state level, as of last week, so that exact plan.
Okay, and this plan is for how many bedrooms?
I believe it's six. I had them upsize it just so I wouldn't have any issues, because there's, you know, going to be four kids and four adults, so I wanted to make sure. I know they go by bedrooms, but I don't want, if I'm going to pay a lot of money for septic, I don't want to have any issues with it, you know, in a year or two at all.
So how many bedrooms? I know the, uh, accessory dwelling unit is one bedroom.
And then there's two in the, there's four in the main house, and then it would be one in the...
So a total of five bedrooms at the end of the day?
And I have them, I believe that plan is for six, if I recall correctly, if they did it.
You're talking about the septic plan?
The septic plan, yeah.
Now, Mark's the one, I mean, Dennis is the one who should read this real fast. So where does it say on here, or if it does?
Um, if I may, I think it should be on the, the top right now.
That's probably right in front of me.
Uh, I mean, this is a, that's a good question.
What's the size of the tank, do you know? I'm looking it up right now.
Um, the size of the tank is 2,500, which is tank one. Is it in this right here? Location, capacity 1,500 and 1,250. Inlet, top tank, bottom line, low.
It's usually, I thought it...
Room, footing, you know?
Yeah, you used to find them in the notes.
If you look where it says, sort of in the bottom, map 5 lot 4-2, in the box above that, it says, "Design Intent."
Four bedrooms plus two bedrooms.
Two, yeah.
Four bedroom, two bedroom ADU.
Yep, so it's for, designed for six bedrooms.
Okay.
All right. Other questions from the board? I have one. Have you by chance spoken with code enforcement or the fire chief yet?
I have not. Uh, I spoke briefly to the building inspector. I submitted an application, um, for, you know, this appro, if this gets approved. Uh, I figured I was down here and I was filling out applications, I was just going to fill them out, all of them.
All right. That, if this is approved tonight, that is a, uh, next step.
Okay.
I would recommend, um, having a good conversation with the building inspector, who's also the code enforcement.
I definitely intend to. I'm, I'm a builder by trade, so that's definitely one of the questions I'm eager for, because I'd like to know exactly, you know, what his expectations are, so I can make sure this goes smoothly, should you guys approve it.
And one of the reasons is having a good conversation with him and suggesting or asking if he could possibly help you through the process with, um, any fire codes.
Okay.
Because that will, and then maybe he can help you with the fire chief.
Okay.
Have that communication going, which...
Absolutely. I appreciate that.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Barbara?
I just have a quick question. Our accessory dwelling unit square footage maximum is...
800.
Okay, I was just making sure we didn't need a waiver.
Yeah.
Right, yeah. And I did, um, look and see that he's got a very large parking area, so he's got adequate parking for the house and the ADU.
Yeah.
It stinks to shovel.
I'm sure.
They have these little things, you push a button and it goes, and then it does this.
That hill is, I have one, and that hill is not friendly.
I do have one, uh, correspondence from the fire chief. Our process is whenever we get an application in, a notification gets sent out to all the department heads. And he was notified, his reply back to the administrative assistant, "Afternoon, Jim. The fire department does not approve this applicant's request for an accessory apartment located at 41 Highland Street at this time until a life safety review can be done."
Okay. And he's in on like Tuesdays?
I'm not sure. I don't want you to worry too much about this, because he, there is no approval from him at, prior to us.
Right, right, but it, it is key in the official CFO. Yeah.
Yeah, so, uh, okay, any, uh, any further questions, comments? It seems like it's...
No.
It looks good.
Okay, if I could have a motion to, uh, grant the, uh, application for the accessory dwelling unit?
This is Barbara. I'll make a motion with all our usual life safety compliances.
There are three standard conditions. Obtain all state and local permits. Uh, limit of the accessory apartment is 800 square feet, just in case you decide to go up. And, um, the final one is a life safety inspection upon completion.
Okay, upon completion, yeah.
This is Barbara, I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion at a second. I would suggest, um, you don't wait until upon completion to bring...
Absolutely.
Both fire chief and code enforcement in.
I build labs in downtown, so conversations with inspectors and entities are always a very helpful thing.
Yeah, they tend to make things go smaller.
Absolutely.
So I have a, a motion at a second. Any further discussion for the board? Okay, Jim, if you could call the roll, please.
Mr. Andrews?
Aye.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Mrs. Lavoy?
Aye.
Mr. Mashon?
Aye.
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Ms. Collier?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much, sir.
Appreciate your time.
Welcome to the town.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
And this meeting was not shy of any entertainment, and I...
That was the most people we've had. I said that last meeting, but that was the most people we've had in like a year and a half.
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to close that public hearing at, um, 7:57.
Thank you. Thanks for saving your barn.
Okay, other board business. Acceptance of the minutes from our last meeting, February 8th, 2022. Motion, please.
Make a motion to approve, February 8th, 2022.
Okay, second? Second down the hall. And if no further discussion, Jim, call the roll, please.
Mr. Andrews?
Aye.
Ms. Collier?
Aye.
Mr. Mashon?
Aye.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Lavoy?
Aye.
Mr. Moran? That's unanimous.
Okay, thank you. An NEPR manifest, if I could have a motion to pay the NEPR manifest in the amount of
So move, this is Barbara.
Aye.
I'll second.
Aye. I heard, uh...
Okay.
Mark?
Me?
Mark seconded.
I did? No, I didn't.
Oh, I heard it from out here, and I, you're usually louder.
I found it.
Who seconded?
Who seconded? Okay.
Oh, okay. Mr. Andrews?
Aye.
Ms. Collier?
Aye.
Mr. Mashon?
Aye.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Lavoy?
Aye.
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Okay, thank you. And the next item is we have, we talked about this a little bit before, the home-based business application. It's been updated a little bit to have a, uh, separate one when there is not any retail customer area, so there's no confusion. So a lot of these...
Give me a minute, Mike.
Pardon me?
I think we, I think we have a second NEPR manifest. There were two of them.
Yeah, that vote was to pay both.
Uh, but you, the amount that you read was only for the larger one.
Jim, Jim, Jim.
No?
No, it was, uh, total, $3,502.
Okay.
Printed ones is a, is a 102.64 and a 3,399.95.
Okay, that's fine, I just wanted to make sure we got them both.
We did. Thank you very much, though. It's always good to cover that now versus later.
Mm-hmm.
So anyway, that was the, the reason for having this separate one. Um, and, uh, Jim and Barbara worked on this. Do either one of you want to make comments on it? Barbara?
Um, basically, it's, it's, um, it's for somebody who almost has just a home, um, almost like a home office, but they need to be able to register their vehicles and they need to be able to register their business with an address. So this will, um, really says that, um, they're not really going to be conducting any business out of the house, and they won't be having anything stored there.
Yeah. So a, a question on tonight's first hearing, and how would this, would, this would be appropriate for that one?
It wouldn't be.
No.
Their vehicles are over 12,000 G W.
Okay, so for that one, it would be, what excluded it from this type of application would be the, the number of vehicles and the size?
Uh, that's in Eurozoning regs. And it's, they can have up to 1,200.
Right, up to 1,200.
It's a weird...
It is a strange way of placing it.
Just be like the truck I daily drive. It's not commercially registered, so it's exempt, is over 12,000 G W, so, yeah.
Yeah, because 12,000, six ton.
Right, which is like a three-quarter ton pickup truck these days.
Exactly.
Just a general comment, I don't think it generally changes anything. But like, this 110 Ford is probably 16,000 or 18,000 these days.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, but I think we took that number right out of the ordinance.
Which makes sense, yeah, right? I was just curious of where we got that, but...
Maybe we need, maybe we need to, um, change that in the ordinance, since vehicles are getting bigger, just even regular trucks.
I will say for that very specific, I did work with 110 where they talked about you couldn't have a tri-axle vehicle as, as opposed to the weight.
That would probably be...
Yeah.
Better.
Is that a, that would just be a internal change, or is that...
No, that would be a zoning. You can't do that until next year.
That would be a warrant, okay.
Well, just a note, if, even if we had 16,000 and that was the amount for the 350, in the first application, they're trailers, so that would be more than the 16,000, so...
Yeah, I would, I brought that up, because I just want to, in my mind, and for us, that this is a very limited use of basically trying to tie it just to those people that need an address to register their vehicle.
And their business.
I mean, their business, yes.
They, they need this in order to register their business, register a vehicle, and open a business, uh, banking account. Those are, those are the three requirements. The lady that was at the last meeting...
The vending machine?
Has been, her landlord ended up canceling it, because the other application kicks off a complete life safety inspection of the building. What this does is this basically gives people permission to register a bus, basically use their address for their business, um, but conduct nothing else there.
Yeah.
That is...
Good, something, Jen.
Oh, I was just going to say, it's basically a home occupation, but they have a car for their business, beyond that.
So my question is, does this application, and a, a application that is approved under this permit, what further requirements of, is an applicant required from the town? As in, like, right now, our standard thing is, uh, permits, life safety. Does this application exempt somebody from having to get life safety in that whole?
No.
Okay.
So what is it saving us?
Yes, why, why wouldn't it? Yes, I think it does.
Jen, why wouldn't it?
I, well, I, I would keep those conditions, to be honest, even if it's not going to trip up the fact that you may not actually need a life safety. Because having the...
I think you understand why I'm asking this question?
I do.
Is, it would be nice if these people who are just trying to have a mailbox don't have to deal with a particular department that is being unreasonable when it comes to wanting to have a mailbox. Jim?
What, we don't have an application, nor do, does the planning board actually hold public hearings on home occupations. And five or six years ago, people with home occupations could go to the bank and just declare themselves, they could go and register a vehicle, and they could register a business with the state using their home address. If you notice, that, that is quoting an RSA...
Yeah.
At the top. This satisfies that, because you have, the state is cracking down on when it's a, if you want to, to register it, it's a business, it has to have permission from the town to be a business, even though we would normally think of it as being a home occupation. I could picture this being, having to, in certain instances, depending upon who's running things, your good old-fashioned Avon lady, she wants to, you know, register her vehicle to her Avon, she's going to have to fill out one of those.
Yeah.
It's regrettable, but it's because we've become such a litigious society that they're having to do this, banks are going, no, you, you can't use your home address, you have to have a business address to, to set up a business account.
So, short of changing the RSA, is there a way that this board, under our existing zoning, either through this permit or some other procedure, have a way that the, the applicants can comply with the RSA without having to do anything more than filling out kind of an application that we approve, without having to go to other, without having us putting all those other conditions on?
So just, you can put on whatever conditions that you would like. You do not have to put on the life safety condition. If it applies, it still applies legally, whether it's a condition you guys put on it or not.
It shouldn't apply if there are no employees, customers...
Yep.
Retail space.
Retail space.
Or we don't know either way.
I mean, just because, I'll be a little facetious, but just because something requires a septic permit, just because you guys don't tell somebody they need a septic permit, doesn't mean they don't need a septic permit.
Right. What I'm trying to minimize is other departments turning down applicants for a permit that they're not even required to have.
I just pulled up the RSA, if we want to hear it. So every person, proprietorship, partnership, or association as defined in RSA 349, colon in RSA 349:1, engaged in the conduct of any business, enterprise, venture, or activity within the state of New Hampshire under a trade name, firm, or style shall, subject to the limitations hereinafter, set forth, file in the Office of Secretary of State a certificate signed by such person or by the members of such partnership or association stating the name under which the business is to be conducted, the principal place of said business, and a brief description of the kind of business to be carried on with the names and addresses of the principal parties engaged therein. Said registration shall further state the date of the organization of said business. So, it's...
Does that go down at colon 5?
That is 349:5.
Oh, okay. I thought I heard you say 1.
It ties back to colon 1, which is as defined in colon 1. So, colon 1 would define the definition, my guess, as a proprietorship, partnership, or association, as defined by that colon. So, it's... My interpretation is that if your business meets RSA 349:1, you can then register your business... Or you need to register your business according to this.
And the RSA says you have to... That business has to be... Where does it say that the business has to be recognized by the town?
It doesn't. It says that you have to have an address. However, in order to... Once you do that, in order to go downstairs and register your vehicle, that vehicle has to be registered to a legal registered business address.
So, I have a question. What if you don't have a vehicle? What if you just want to open a bank account in the name of the business?
If you just want to open a bank account, you need to have a legal business address. So, what this is doing is this creates somebody's home as a legal business address versus having to... They're all old enough to remember the days when businesses used to be able to rent a post office box. You can't do that anymore.
Interesting.
There has to be a physical address.
Because this sounds like... I'm gonna have you say something. That it's... There ought to be a way, and we probably have to change it, does this even need to really have a public hearing?
You mean this?
Is that something we're putting on... Like, this is almost somebody, an application. It meets it, it's signed. It's like, isn't that something that the building inspector?
I'll be honest, you guys are the only town that this has come up in. And I don't work with every town in New Hampshire, but you're the only one that I've had this come up. I have some towns where what you have defined as home occupation and home-based business are just allowed by right. There's a few parameters. I think we could work on a small amendment to your zoning to clarify this.
Can I say something?
It's really a home occupation that they simply want to register their vehicle. So, you could declare in these situations that they are home occupation and approve it in that way.
Why don't we just do that?
Well...
Go ahead, Barbara.
Mike, this is Barbara. The thing is that when the people go to the town clerk to register a vehicle under a business name, they check with the administrative assistant to make sure if it's gotten planning board approval and are they a business. And this would satisfy that, because then we could say... You know, then the office could say, yes, they've gone through the process and we gave them okay, so now that's their business address and they can register their vehicle if they want.
Yeah. I understand that. That's how it is now.
So, an alternative could be, so they have to come to you to say, is it a home occupation or a home-based business? You guys already do that process. If you determine it's home occupation, a notice of decision could be developed that would basically be able to be used as paperwork to say, yep, planning board's aware, this address is where a home occupation is taking place. And that would be the paperwork, and then you wouldn't have to go through the whole process.
Would we have to make it clear, something that said this home occupation meets RSA?
You could say this business qualifies under the Newton zoning ordinance as a home occupation.
I'm just saying, can they... Because they have to use this not just to register a vehicle, but say, open up a bank account.
Do we have to make that distinction, or can the applicant?
They have to come before you anyway, so you guys would have to make that distinction. It's pretty clear, though, once something qualifies as one or the other.
Jen, go ahead.
If you'd like, I can change it from home-based business to a home occupation application and remove the requirement for a public hearing, noticing... So that it's a... They come before the board, they speak to the board. The board says, yes, this is a customary home occupation. You receive a notice of decision saying that you have a business based at X address, which the planning board has declared is a customary home occupation, period.
Is this something that... Like, could you research a little bit? Jim, I want something, or I... Correct me if I'm wrong here, guys. I'm trying to find something that is as simple as what they are requesting. A process that's as simple as what they're requesting and doesn't require them to jump through hoops that aren't necessary.
So, when someone comes to do a home occupancy, home-based business, have them go through that same process that you do right now when they come. And if it truly is a home occupation, you have a home occupation verification form that after they come and you think that, yes, it is home occupation, you sign it, they can be on their way. So, it wouldn't require a public hearing, wouldn't require the NEPR deposits, it's not a conditional use permit. It's, you have to come before the planning board. And if we determine your home occupation truly is, here's the paperwork, here's the decision that says that, yes.
Would that give them what they need to...
It should.
To get the bank account? Because I understand we can do that probably internally to say, yeah, they can register their vehicle now.
Well, it would be basically like what you're saying, Jen, is that going on good faith, that they're just gonna fill it out, the paperwork gets turned in, gets registered with Jim here, and then they just go about business, doing what they need to do.
No, they would still have to come before you guys.
They'll still have to come before the board?
You still want them to have to come before you.
It would be under the... Inside of the home-based business, the home occupation.
Yes.
How about if we just changed the application for a home-based occupation to say home-based occupation business? Because what I'm trying to figure out is, what do these banks need in, say, downstairs to say, oh, it's a business under this RSA so you can register your darn vehicles and open up your bank account?
But the second from the state?
Requirement?
Well, you're registering it at the state?
The requirement from the state is that you are designated a business by the town, because the town's the only one that designates you a business. See, that's this little catch-22 there.
So, it's really...
Yeah, that's what I was wondering, is if they're going to accept the language that says home occupation instead of business.
Yeah. That's the research, I guess.
Yeah, we'd have to have business.
Yeah, a little bit of... I'd like to have a little bit more clarification. I get the vehicle thing, and I get that. I don't... And my own personal experience is interfering with my ability to get it. I get that. I mean, years ago, I had a home-based business with not a vehicle, but I had a bank account. I had an LLC.
I had the same thing, and then I ended up having to move out of my home because things changed. And that was 37 years ago.
Well, this was not quite as far ago as that, but I was certainly able to get an EIN number and open up a bank account. So, I'd like a little more research.
Well, that's where the RSA is changed, so, under the...
And from what Dennis read, I didn't get that. So, I'd like to take some time.
How about, would home occupied base business?
Well, I think we need to do...
I think we need to do research on two things. We need research on that, and then I would like to see like two or three examples of what other towns have done that makes their process a little bit more streamlined and efficient.
So, I can give you information on what their zoning and then their basic forms look like. As far as how they are dealing with the car registration, I can ask around, but I won't necessarily have examples to be able to give you.
So, between you and, say, Jim, we could probably get enough information that we could...
I think we just need more to work off of, because right now, I think we're all like parsing over language that we can't solve tonight.
We're guessing.
Yeah, we're guessing. So, I would like to see what other places have done.
In the meantime, I have two potential applicants that are waiting to find out if this got passed tonight because they're having the same problems right at the moment. They went to the bank, the bank said, no, you can't use your home address because your home address is not commercial property.
So, can they just go through the old process rate for right now? And then we'll fit... Once we get the more research, we'll...
That's up to the board.
We could accept this as written, and that wouldn't keep us from moving forward. And then, Barbara, I'm gonna ask you, is there... Do you think there's enough changes in this application to warrant adopting it as a separate application? Or just waiting for better information?
Well, I think we could adopt this right now, and I think that if you decide to change it, you could always make an amendment to the application and then just start using a new one.
Yeah. The nice thing about these applications, it's all in-house and it just takes on... Jen?
I make one recommendation, though. Given the intent of this application, is there truly a need for the NEPR fee?
That's where I was, yeah.
I can tell, when I was working on the form, I left things in place until people said, yeah, this is going to become a... Just a one-shot in front of the planning board. There's no... You really don't need a plot plan, you don't need... There's a bunch of things on there that can...
Yeah. This is a working document.
Yeah.
Because this is the first time most anybody's seen.
I think we should get rid of that fee. That doesn't make any sense.
I mean, these two applicants, I hate to hate them, paying an extra $3.75 each if that isn't needed, but I don't think we know at this point if we can waive that.
I mean, there probably should be, there should be some minimal application fee, simply because that goes directly to offset my time.
Yeah. Well, we could keep the application fee for now and remove the NEPR fee.
Okay.
I have a question for Jim. If we kept the application fee at 100, would that cover the newspaper notice?
No.
But if we don't need a public...
That's where the NEPR fee usually comes in. Because you have to assume that it could, maybe it's only one applicant and they have to cover the entire fee part.
And as long as they're still using it, it's a conditional use permit, home-based business, it's still, we still have to have the public hearing.
But only if you determine it's a home-based business and not a home occupancy.
Okay. But then that would be a two-step process.
How much is the newspaper fee?
Oh, boy. It can get...
See, that's my...
No, the newspaper fee is standard. I was thinking the butter.
That's my other question. Does it really have to be put in the paper if they're just using it to get a bank account and to register their car?
This is for the board to decide. If the process is very simple, you fill out the application, I schedule for the next board meeting, you come, you talk to the board, the board says, yes, this sounds...
I mean, why pay...
Then there would be no butter notices. There would be no public notice in the newspaper. Therefore, the... The NEPR fee could probably be reduced to 50 bucks only for if the board wishes to record that as a protection for the people... The notice of decision could be recorded to protect the applicant. And that is, you know, that's gonna cost $12.58, plus $11.
If they're not doing anything at that residence as far as actual business, then we don't need to have a butter's notices.
Right.
It would just be on the regular agenda, and if somebody was looking at the agenda, they would see that this would come up for, you know... Maybe we just need to give it a different name.
Well, just to play devil's advocate, the only downside to this is if publicly this is seen as sort of a retraction of transparency of what people are doing in town. And I could see that, even if it's not rooted in truth, I could see that getting misconstrued by a lot of people, and that's something that I think we need to consider. Because people in this town like to know what their neighbors are doing.
Well, in some ways, and as you mentioned, this is a...
You think?
Work in progress. So, I'm looking at this, and they shouldn't have any outside display. Like, there's no reason to have a sign if all they're doing is using this place to register vehicles. So, that takes away one of the issues that, you know, the public would be upset about.
I think we should still keep it on because I think it's still checking the box physically and like just so that they're fully clear.
Well, I'm just saying they can't have a sign. If they're gonna do this, they...
Right.
No sign.
So, it's changing the... Our definitions of... Well... Is it?
Well, this, in a sense, this is kind of a new definition because it's home-based business without retail customer area. That is a new subset, in a sense. Maybe all the other rules of procedure and stuff haven't caught up with it yet.
So that, you know...
The definition.
No storing of material.
Yeah, all that stuff applies. I'm just saying, okay, and so how do we make it to be more restrictive so it doesn't bring up any transparency issues? So, now it's like, oh, no, you can't have a sign. You're just using this to register your business.
So, I'd like us to reduce the NEPR fee on here to 50 bucks and take out the butter letters and the... As a part of it. And approve it that way.
Well, have we... I know where you're going with that. Have we brought this down to a level that we can do that? Because as long as it's a home-based business, we have to do the butter notices. If we change it to home-based occupation, then...
Does that cover the...
Then we don't have to do the butter notification.
Does that cover the RSA 349?
That's what we're hoping for, but...
That can all be covered in the notice of decision.
Okay.
Just to clarify, just so you are not changing how you are or even potentially being, I'm gonna say, accused of changing the definitions under your zoning, why don't we call this the home-based business slash home occupancy without retail customer area? So, then you guys are still open to make it determination it's home occupancy. If it is home-based business, then it triggers all of the normal process. Call it both.
Does that... Is there a way to structure this so that there's a potential to... If we go that route, the applicant still has to pay for the full public notice, correct?
Not if you are... If you end up just determining it be a home occupation, you don't need a public hearing, so it doesn't have to be noticed, it doesn't have to be a...
So, that would automatically trigger a two-hearing event?
Potentially. So, you could potentially risk an applicant taking longer if it really is on that edge. But if it really is a home occupation by a straight-faced test, there would be no need for it to ever have a second meeting.
And...
And a public hearing and all of that.
Right. So, are we potentially inadvertently delaying somebody that is a home-based business from closing the hearing in one visit?
There's a risk, but I feel like...
Well, and that's something I think that would fall under administrative assistants duties to say, okay... Because right now, you... Somebody comes in and you give them advice on which permit they fill out. And then it could be, okay, well, you're wanting to do this one. However, you're right on the borderline, and if the board decides you're this way, you know, it's gonna take another meeting. So, therefore, you could put the money up, and if they so choose that you're just an occupation, you'll get it back.
Or a portion of it back.
Right.
Okay, this is Barbara. You could run into a problem if you don't... Because of the timeframe. And if... Okay, we have a meeting every two weeks, except for when there's an election coming up. Okay. If you determine at the first meeting that, yes, we need to do a butter's notices, there's not time enough to get a newspaper notice and the butter notices out by the timeframe that's required. You can't do it. It just can't happen.
Yeah. Well, let me ask you this question. Part of the deciding if it's a completed application would be deciding if it's a completed application for what? And if we decided that, say, well, it's not a completed application for the home-based business, so, yes, we'd have to have a little more discussion than we've been doing. But right there, if you don't take jurisdiction, the clock doesn't start.
That's kind of, goes back to my question a couple minutes ago. Can we allow the applicant to make the initial determination on whether or not they're a home-based business?
Yeah, and that's where the discussion with the administrative assistant, where it's like, oh, somebody's coming in and it's a clear and dry, and it's just occupancy, period. Okay. Okay.
He bets it.
No, you're pushing it, and it's just right now, it's like minor site plan, major site plan.
How about, how about if we add on the back, 14, no signage, there'll be no signage, 15, there'll be no employees, 16, there'll be no storage of equipment or supplies. Oh, it already says no outside storage. Okay. So, just 14 and 15.
Well, or just rewrite 2. That's the one that talks about the sign.
Okay.
But you just, you just, we don't have the-
Okay, so no employees. Shall be conducted by the-
That's true.
It doesn't say no employees on here.
Yeah, it does on the-
It does on the home base.
No, it says number of employees on the front.
Oh, okay.
That was stuff that still needs to be cleaned out.
Right. So, then that would be one of the checklist items, I guess, is that, well, right now in number 11, no retail space will exist, no customers come to the premises, you just have in there.
Yeah, no employees.
Is the owner or the employee? I don't want to get into that.
Not if you're a sole proprietorship.
Okay. Well, I don't want to spend a whole heck of a lot of time on this.
Too late.
Well, I know, too late.
Good point.
Quite honestly, this came up because of that young lady in the past, but we also have had several over the past few years where somebody is a computer software developer, and they closed down their office, they moved home, they're, that is the extent of their office.
Yeah.
And in order to be able to do things like town hall and the bank, they came before us, they sprang for the whole thing, and there was no problem.
Yeah.
However, there's the potential that all of those are now going to have to have annual life safety inspections of their homes.
Yeah. That's where this is all coming from.
And-
You guys don't understand that.
No, that, you know, that.
We're trying to make it, we want people to comply with the law, comply with the ordinances, and we don't want to make it so difficult that you have people saying, well, I heard so-and-so went through this, I'm not even going to bother, I'm just going to do it.
Well, either they're just going to do it, or they're going to go, I can't do it, and I guess I'm going to have to try to maintain an office someplace until I go broke.
Yeah. We, I think I'm ready to-
Can I say something? I think maybe, maybe we should think about this, think about how we would like to change this. There was a similar sort of thing that I worked on for the other town that I worked for, that was somebody who was trying to qualify to just get an address for their business, using their home address, and the little bit of different thing of that one is that they happened to be located in a zone that was said, "commercial," but they were in a residence, so it was like an overlay, commercial, residential. And so, I think we had something totally different than this. I'll just go in and see if I can find what that is, and that might work better than this.
Yeah, I'm familiar with what Barbara's talking about. It is, it's a different way of doing it. It's not better, it's not worse, it's just different.
Yeah. I think if we can minimize bringing in problems that these people don't need to deal with, is I think that's the intent, so.
Including fees they don't need.
Yeah. So, we'll let this, thank you very much for the work on this so far, Jim and Barbara.
Yep.
I think for now, we'll, we'll hand it back and the discussion we had, and Barbara, you can work with Jan and Jim and come up with something miraculous.
Sounds good.
Okay. Any further questions on that? Okay. Anything else?
Yes.
For the board? Yes?
I believe that this is going to be your last meeting as chair, and I want, would like to thank you very much for being one of the best chairs that we've had, being very diligent, making sure that you understood everything, and I certainly appreciate it.
Well, thank you very much, Barbara.
The lack of that.
I had good training with you as the chair. It's great working with everybody, too. I appreciate all your help and just helping me make things easier and-
We'll watch you back.
All right. If there's nothing else, then I will close the meeting at 8:36.
Very good.
I know, I went over a little bit longer, but hey.